Okay, I am gonna reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council. Any report, city manager?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, well then, we will re-adjourn the city council, the special city council meeting, and I will call to order the regular city council meeting for October 22nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council members Rodriguez.
Here.
Roarbaugh.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
And Kozlowski.
Also here. And if everybody would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we, we'll do agenda updates afterwards. First up tonight is gonna be Business from the Floor. This, as a reminder for those of you in the audience, this is an opportunity to speak on items that are not already on the agenda. Do we have any requests to speak?
We have one request to speak from Ronald Carter.
Okay.
Please come up to the podium. Thank you.
Mr. Carter, the usual protocol is in place. Three minutes. Let her rip.
I wanted to thank you folks for listening to me. When you get to be my age, sometimes it gets hard to find an audience. Thank you for being here for me to listen to me. I wanted to speak exactly back on Measure G, because I don't believe in it. But before I even go there, I wanted to mention to the city council, several years ago, we had a, the park out here, Marshal Colin Farley, he was killed in Vietnam. And Marshal was really a great patriot. He served his entire life. My brother, Leslie Dean Carter Jr., almost had peril, peril at their lives similar. He was killed in Vietnam. I think so often we forget to thank those who serve this nation. And they served it with dignity in their lives. My brother, short to leave Vietnam, had said, Ron, he sent me a postcard, December, November, no, December of 1969, I was a kid. He says, Ron, I don't know every reason we're in Vietnam, but I know our heavenly Father wants us here. He died by those words. Anyway, going forward, and I really believe firmly that Pledge Allegiance to the flag is my best part of this day. It's been a rough week on me. And respectfully, going back to the proposition, or Measure, excuse me, G, I don't, I mean, I hear about these, the citizen group that has helped bring this about, but I don't know one of them, or I don't even know who they are. So I hear opposition to it, but opposing what citizens said what, did what to get it on the ballot? I don't believe in it, because it's overreach. Right now, we're going in some tough times. In real estate, I see it every day. Foreclosures are, foreclosures are rising dramatically. People are looking at losing their homes, and who's in tow with mom and dad? Children. And as I said last week, and I said back in '04 when I ran for city council here in Folsom, my slogan was simple. If it works for families, it works for Folsom. When you lose the kids, the kids don't, children don't have a place to go, as in a home, or they have other places they need to go, have to go because of forced circumstances. I think we needed to take a closer look at it and save that money for a day, or look at that proposal when it's time. Today's not the time. This isn't the climate for raising taxes. And I think it's gonna fail, because it's proper and fitting that it does fail. And I think if we look forward, we look forward to a lot of torment. We look forward to a lot of civil disobedience. Moral perpetuity is nowhere to be found anymore in law enforcement. The citizens simply don't respect the police.
Mr. Carter, you gotta wrap up.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up. So I encourage everybody within this audience and the airways to say, no, we're not gonna allow this. It's wrong. And I said it last week, or two weeks ago, it's, it's wrong on its face. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. God bless you all.
All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any others?
No other speakers.
Okay, fantastic. Are there agenda updates?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. There's additional information transmittal for Item 7 on tonight's agenda. A copy has been, has been previously provided to you, and it is also available on the table in the back.
All right, excellent. Okay, we will move on to scheduled presentations. Would you like to call the next item, please?
Yes. Item 1 is a presentation of the 11th Annual Folsom Community Service Day Results.
Happy to see you both.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for your time as we celebrate. Okay, I have to do it.
Uh huh.
Yay, the happy dance of our wonderful 11th Community Service Day. It was so fun. And we accomplished quite a bit, so that's what this presentation's hopefully gonna highlight for you. Oh, and I, we are wearing our shirts. We're very proud of these tie-dye shirts. He doesn't want to hear tie-dye for another year. And there we are, at least some of us. We had, it's on the next slide, but I want you to take this one in, because it was pretty fun to take that picture, too. We had 2,360 volunteers, which is a fabulous number. 127 projects that were citywide. Got some maps to show you where those occurred. Oh, well, there we go. And then all of our volunteer hours. Over 9,000 volunteer hours. We have an amazing community. I think we all can already agree, but that just blew me away. So I hope that blows you away, too. Couple of maps of what we actually accomplished. So this is our community, the actual projects within the city to see how varied they were. We're looking here at the blue triangles. And these ranged from mulch at schools to work at the various parks, whether it would be cleanup, moving rock, painting sheds, just a whole variety. Also, military care packages. The list goes on and on. Tree trimming, you could read it all if you cared to, but just a lot of different projects. And then, the overlapping is the neighbors helping seniors, so all of the red circles. And you can see, again, those are also spread throughout the city with a large percent of that being in the mobile home parks off of, sorry, they're not called that. There's a name that's, I can't remember what it is. Anyway, doesn't matter. Lots of folks that were needing help, we got to help them, which was great.
Manufactured housing.
Thank you so much, yes. That is the appropriate word. And so, food drive. I don't know if you saw any of the videos, but the team did a phenomenal job creating a couple of videos. And so, because of that, 28 tons of food was collected, and I did go to ChatGPT to see what that was. And it said that's roughly 56,000 meals.
Wow.
So, helping our folks in need. I mean, there's nothing that makes your heart happier, in my opinion, than to help those that need help. Donation drive, another part of our push this year. Bikes, purses, coats for Folsom Unified School District, that was a new project. And then yarn and fabric, and then pet supplies, or, yep, pet shelter supplies. And the percentages at the end of some of those categories represents the increase that we've had over last year in donations. And then the blood drive. They were very happy with the turnout for folks that decided to donate blood that day as their way of volunteering. Again, fabulous. And then, just breaking down some photos, 88 senior projects were completed. All kinds of things, and we've got some great video that we'll be showing you about some of the folks that received that service. And then also, of course, we have to thank not just our volunteers, but all the sponsors that allowed this to happen for us, because we did have to purchase supplies, obviously. So, as our presenting sponsor, Dignity Health, $15,000. Our visionary sponsors at $10,000. Lakeside, Lennar, Style Media Group, Folsom Times, Good Fellow Brothers. Our leader sponsors at $5,000. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Folsom Telegraph, Straight Line Roofing and Construction, Palladio, and Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento. Partner sponsors at $3,000. The Rotary Club of Folsom, Kikeman, Micron, Kaiser Permanente, Elliott Homes, Winco Foods, Dachan Engineering and American Logo wear. And our good neighbor sponsors at $1,500. American River Ace Hardware, Sierra Marlins, Choose Folsom, and SMUD. And we hope that many will be repeat sponsors next year. So a grand total of over $125,000 in cash and in-kind sponsorships to allow this day to be as successful as it was. And big thank yous to some that didn't give in some ways, but gave a lot in other ways. City of Folsom, wonderful people. Lakeside Church, they hosted the event in the morning while we did our kickoff. Twin Lakes Food Bank, of course, all of the sponsors I just mentioned. And then the steering committee, that had to work with me doing happy dance. And all of these wonderful folks just made my job so much easier, because they know what they're doing, they did it, and it was just wham-bam, we're done. It was great. And now, just a short video.
This is Folsom Community Service Day, and we just absolutely love the fact that people from all different ages and stages of life, different walks of life, come together and unite to do what's already in their heart, and that's to love their community. And it's beautiful. It's amazing.
This is our 11th Community Service Day. We've got 2,000 volunteers out doing community improvement projects all across the city. When you get to be part of a team, that gives you the motivation to keep going and continue to do that service, you know, for a lifetime.
It's one day of year, but it does really capture kind of the spirit of what Folsom's all about. It's about us all kind of pitching in and being a part of something bigger. It's pretty special.
This food drive benefited Twin Lakes Food Bank. We've been really low on food, and this is kind of our day to restock the warehouses. I know last year, they did 91 rounds, which is each of these pallets is a round. Oh, this party out here for us, this is great. We just love seeing the people and really appreciate all the help we're getting.
Today, at the Folsom City Zoo's anchor, we've got a roofing project happening at the top of the gift shop and our ticket booth. These roofs have been pretty old, so we've been lucky to partner with Straight Line Roofing and get these roofs re-roofed. The Rotary Club helped us with this specific project site, as far as the demolition, so that took place last week. And so, combination of partnerships with service organizations, other businesses here in Folsom, really make Community Service Day special.
And we're here with Neighbors Helping Seniors, and we're at Virginia's house right now. We are fixing up her front area right there. We realigned the wall, checked in the bark, and we also cleaned up her windows and cleared out her gutters in the back of the house. It's so cool to be part of this big group of everyone helping everyone out. Having all the people come together to help out people who can't do things on their own, like, I think it's such a cool project.
We're painting the fence at the Airflotx Center. Especially, like, sometimes I come here with my mom, and so, like, this pride, right, like, seeing that work being done and knowing you've taken part in having a project completed, and then just everyone else comes here daily, will get to have a nicer place to be.
This isn't something that's coming out of the city's fund in some way, shape, or form. All the money spent is coming directly from sponsors for this event. The more sponsors that we can get, the more projects that we can accomplish, and we're meeting all the, all the goals that we've set out to do to help our community, help our neighbors. Woo! I can't clap, sorry.
Great job.
Wonderful day. Thank you so much. And a little plug for next year. That will be the date, Saturday, September 20th. We would love to do this all over again, and even bigger. So, thank you.
Very good. Only 333 days to go.
Yeah.
Outstanding. Thank you both. Okay, we are moving to the consent calendar. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull for discussion?
I'll go ahead and move Items 2, 3, and 4 from the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
Council members Rodriguez.
Yes.
Roarbaugh.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Also, yes. Okay, and then, we had two public hearings on the calendar for this meeting, and we were going to kick them forward and postpone them to November 26th, but we are not going to hold that meeting, the second meeting, in November because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So those are both gonna get moved to a future agenda when the time is right. TBD. Okay, so we can skip over 5 and 6, which takes us to Old Business, Item Number 7. Would you please call the item?
Item number 7 from Old Business is ordinance number 1348, an ordinance of the City of Folsom, amending sections 10.20.220 and 10.20.230 of the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to parking in alleys in the historic district. Second reading and adoption continued from October 8th, 2024.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hi there.
Aloha, Vice Mayor. Members of council. Mark Rackavan, your Public Works Director. I'm back. This is, as the city clerk mentioned, a continuation from the October 8th meeting of consideration of inordinance to prohibit parking in historic district alleyways. Just a refresher, the purpose and need here, these alleyways are used for solid waste collection and emergency access. They're, for the most part, 20 feet wide alleyways that were not designed to accommodate private parking. That parking can obstruct our ability to provide those essential city services, and we don't have an ordinance in place yet that allows us to prohibit parking. This is a conceptual exhibit that I put together to maybe better explain the issue from the public work standpoint. You know, the truck is almost 10 feet wide, you know, the bins, you know, are 2 and 1/2 feet wide. There's a municipal code requirement that the cans be set 3 feet away from an obstruction, so that the claw mechanism can safely pick up the can without damaging vehicles, fences, and whatnot. So, you add all that up, and you very, you actually get over 20 feet. And so, you know, we need every inch of space in that alleyway when we're performing waste collection services. Again, this is the ordinance that resulted from the first reading, and this is the language that is, is being recommended for adoption this evening. At the last meeting, the council asked for, one, to provide some additional time for comment. As you see from the additional information, we did receive two additional emails in the two weeks since that meeting. There was a request for information on specific alleys that have been identified as problems in the past, map showing alleyway widths, and any data from the fire department regarding callouts to alleyways. So this is a summary of the alleyways that the waste collection drivers have from time to time, reported blockages. Now, I should preface this, that a lot of this is driven not only by, you know, the, the parking behavior of the residents, but also maybe the tolerance level of some of the drivers. So you'll see that in one area, the driver is particularly concerned about obstructions and, and feels that it impedes his ability to perform that route. In other areas, the drivers have seen, either seen less occurrences, or maybe they're a little bit more inclined to reach out to the owner of the vehicle and say, hey, would you please just move your car until I can complete my route? And more often than not, you know, that, that works. Everyone gets along. Every once in a while, you, you might come across somebody who's either not available or just simply doesn't want to move their vehicles, and says, you know, you can go around. The one that's dashed down there in the lower right, that actually just popped up yesterday. There had never been an issue in that alley. This is the one between Dean and Needles. But yesterday, our driver encountered a trailer that was parked and unattended. He couldn't get past. A supervisor had to come out to help him back out of the alley, but before the supervisor arrived, someone pulled up behind the driver, and, and he couldn't back out. Well, it turned out, fortunately, it was the guy who owned the trailer. So that guy had to drive all the way around, hitch up his trailer, and move it out of the way. The net result was it took two employees, and it took that driver an extra 20 something minutes to deal with that obstruction. The alleyway widths, again, this is based strictly off of the parcel, the Assessor parcel maps. These are the, the widths that are set aside for the city of Folsom. You'll notice that almost all of the ones in the historic district are 20 feet wide. That isn't to say that there's 20 feet of space between fences. There are times when those fences maybe are encroaching a little bit into the public right-of-way. There's trees, there are utility poles, but the letter of the law is that those are 20-foot wide alleys. There is only the one alleyway that's 32 feet wide, wider than 20 feet, and a gentleman came to the meeting, last meeting, and correctly pointed that out. We also have one alley that is narrower than 20 feet. It's only 14 feet wide over there by Orange Grove Way. And there, our drivers try to work with the residents to just make sure they put their cans on one side of the alley, so there's room for the vehicle. And the cans, again, really no room to park a vehicle in there, a private vehicle. I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and go through the summary, but I'll, I'll give Chief Casano also an opportunity to come up and, and respond to the issues associated with his access. But the summary, from my standpoint, is these alleys are used for waste collection, emergency vehicle access. There are generally 20-foot wide public spaces that had no provision for private parking use, only for vehicle access. Parking in these alleys can impede our ability to perform these essential city services. When waste collection is impeded, it may, it means that one or more residences may be impacted. Not only the person who, you know, potentially created the obstruction, but everybody further down the alley might also have a missed pickup. And, and when that happens, those people either have to wait until next week, or they have to call and say there was a missed pickup. And that can cost, you know, $53 per missed pickup, because it's not the driver's fault that the, the waste collection was not performed. You'll recall that at the last meeting, we discussed the number of ADUs, and how many of them do provide some form of onsite parking. I only identified about a half a dozen that I could not find any provision for off, you know, private property parking. And, and if that's the case, those, those residences would either need to modify their property to, to create onsite parking, or they'd have to take advantage of nearby on-street parking. If this ordinance is approved, it would take effect in 30 days at the earliest, which would be December 22nd. It would probably not really take effect until next calendar year. And again, we're not trying to create a parking enforcement wing here. We're just trying to create a mechanism that when education and encouragement has not worked, that we have the authority that we don't currently have to cite something in the municipal code that those vehicles are in obstruction and a violation of the municipal code. I'll turn it over to Chief Casano, and we're both available to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Mayor, city council members.
Chief.
Ken Casano, Fire Chief. Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what Mark said about these alleyways. I recently, to answer one of the questions, that no, we do not have any data on responses to alleyways. We typically don't get calls to respond to an alleyway unless the caller is specifically stating that. But, I mean, I recently just took some drives up and down some of these alleyways, and I was almost shocked to see the, the number of ADUs, that that's their front access to their, to their dwelling. And, and if there was an emergency, that's where we have to go. There's no way that I would want to come down an alleyway, it's blocked, we go back around to the front yard, now we have to go through somebody else's backyard. There's even gates in between ADUs and the property. I mean, it's, it would be a complete mess. When these, when a lot of these ADUs were being approved and coming through the planning process, at least when they came through fire, one of the, or it wasn't a condition, but it was just an assumed, there's an alleyway easement there, that's our access. And if, and if it's blocked, that, that kind of throws the whole, whole thing out of whack, is that we have no way of responding to those, those dwellings. So I would definitely urge the, the council that, what Mark is saying is, is we need some sort of mechanism to be able to, hopefully, you know, teach people that we don't want to park here, don't block the public right-of-way. There is still parking back there, but when it gets, when it gets into the public easement, that we have to have a way of deterring that. So, I'll leave it at that, unless you have any specific questions for me.
Any questions for the chief? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. So, so we had fairly robust discussion about this. Is it okay if I take public comment, and then we can bring it back to the council? Are we okay with that?
Okay.
We have a speaker that would like to comment on this?
We have one speaker for this item, Mike Saletti. Please come up.
Welcome back, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, very quickly, when this first came up, I've been out of town for the last couple meetings, I haven't been here in person, but I saw when it came up, I watched online, I saw the chief talk about he needed 20 feet, and I saw Mark speak, and I totally get it, by the way. I mean, one of the worst offenders is right, but I live on 711, so I'm like, right in the thick of it. One of the worst offenders is right down the street. I mean, his car's, it's like, I can't believe he blocks the alley. So I, I get the need. By, and by the way, I'm all for huge tickets, I'm all for it. My concern was the language of making it generally illegal to park in the alley by blanket banning any parking, parking in the alley. My bet is that most residents in Old Town have no idea this is going on, and when you do pass an ordinance, if the ordinance is no parking in the alley, you're gonna face a firestorm that you really ought not to have to face. I've actually, in the meantime, had the ability to speak with both Mark, and I actually saw the chief today. I want to know how wide the fire truck was. I went down to the station, and he happened to be there. So, I saw your garbage trucks are 9, 9 feet 3 inches. The big fire truck was 8 feet 3 inches. So, I understand why the standard is 20 feet. I get it, that's kind of the standard. My original email is you don't have 20 feet in a lot of places because of permanent fences, concrete retainer rolls, telephone poles, so you don't necessarily have 20 feet. So my initial suggestion was 18. I get if you leave it at 20, I'm good with that, too. That's fine. My concern is, if you just say no more parking in there, I can't imagine what you're going to face, especially in Old Town where who knows where the property lines are anymore. Someone's gonna claim it's not your property, it's mine, you can't tell them I can't park there. So, I would just think it would save a lot of grief to have a more specific ordinance of 18 feet must remain clear at 8 times, or 20 feet must remain clear at 8 times. I heard talk of putting no parking signs on each side. I have to imagine there's 100 blocks downtown, probably, and a sign on each side, so you're talking 200 signs, concrete, pole, sign, labor. Even if they're only 200 bucks apiece, you're talking about, what, you know, 20 grand? 40 grand to put, it seems crazy at a time when we're worried we don't have enough money for everything we need to spend tens of thousands of dollars putting in no parking signs. So, my only real comment is, can we come up with something that we can punish the people who need, punish is the wrong word. We can address the people that need to be addressed that are causing the problem, which is probably, my bet, is a very small percentage of people that are constant offenders. Let's come up with something more defined that we can enforce, so he has room for his fire truck. By the way, if I, if I misquoted you, one of you, feel free to come up here and tell me I'm full of crap, I don't mind at all. But let's come up with something more specific than just completely banning parking in the alley, was my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a question for Mike. This Mike.
I assume so.
When you said your alleyway, you have one of the worst offenders without, so we don't want to name names or anything.
I don't know who their names, I can't name them any.
What does that mean? What does that look like?
So, I'm on the 700 block, it's the 800 block. The, I'm, I'm gonna use gentleman, I don't know if it's a man or a woman, but they have three white vans. And the white vans are clearly at least a quarter of a third into the way to the dirt alley. It's so bad that people have driven around them and kind of created a new alley, which is why I'm saying if you pick the fight over who, the person where the alleyway is now on their property is gonna say, well, that's never the alleyway in the first place, that's my property. I just can't imagine the firestorm it would cost by outright outlawing all parking in the alley. Not to mention the fact that the, the chief was saying is, you know, with all of the ADUs now, and I'm, if I understand correctly, there's, you know, you guys legally don't have a lot of options to say no. You know, my block of Natoma, there is no parking out front. I'm too close to all of the businesses. There's no parking on Natoma Street. Usually, there's no parking on Wool either. So, you know, in our case, our ADU has its own garage, and people park, you know, they park in the garage, and that's, you know, but if you even try to force, you know, some of this ADU parking out on the street, you'll have even more hell on your hands with the people now. The, I was watching the meeting online, the gentleman was very angry that people were parking in front of his house, thought it was rude and inconsiderate. Imagine that times 20, when people find out that they can't park in the alley anymore at all. So, I was here to hopefully avoid So, I was here to hopefully avoid some grief with, you know, the residents in Old Town by finding a more specific provision that gives them clearly what they need, which is don't block the damn alley when the truck needs to come through, that's not that hard. But I guess it is, everything's hard these days, so, yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. For what it's worth, I think Mark put it most eloquently that our objective is to educate people about the necessity to keep the alleys clear and encourage them to do the right thing. And we need a tool in our municipal ordinance to deal with persistent scofflaws, because we don't have a tool in the ordinance currently to that, you know, to deal with that situation. So, Mike, I think your comments kind of hit that point, right? Is that we do, in fact, need to do some enforcement with some outliers, right? Hopefully, the, you know, the majority of the ADUs do have parking that doesn't block the alleyway. There's a small number, as is listed here, that would probably need to relocate. But anyway, I, I felt that the, you know, the ordinance as it was presented originally and then slightly amended, you know, suits my interests in making sure that we just have the tools for dealing with those who persistently ignore education and encouragement. But it's not intended to be anything more than that, so. Any commentary?
I have just a follow-up question for Mark, just to bring up one of the concerns mentioned. We do have an in-house sign shop, so I imagine that any no parking signs we put up, the cost is negligible. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it is, you know, you know, Mike mentioned $200 a sign, and that's, that's a good operating number in terms of the, you know, the time that it takes to manufacture it and the materials that are used.
Okay, okay. And could we maybe put up the actual language of the ordinance, so we can see what it says again?
While you do that, can I just state the, it's public, it is, it is public land. And so, you know, I grew up in a city that was super dense, parking was a problem. And then some people felt they owned the parking in front of their home, but I just want to share that it is public parking. It is owned by the city, and, and nobody owns the land in front of their home. And I just want to state the obvious, that, so that people remember that. As frustrating as it may be to look for parking, it is public parking.
Yeah, we weren't intending to have an officer from Public Works scour the alleys every day, were we?
I'd love to have somebody available to do that, but no, this is certainly not our intention.
YK, any thoughts? Recommendations or a motion?
I'll just make a few comments. I know, my, my good friend Rosario, that's how I feel. I, I went today, I spent about three hours talking, literally, and some gentleman said, I mean, he was literally quoting his house document and planning. My property is all the way half-off alley, that's how it has been defined, I know. So, that's what, we don't know when this was constructed or planned, in 1800s, 1900s, how the numbers were, the lines were drawn, that's some of the people's perception today. And they have been there for 55 years, 60 years. Anyway, that's, just want to make one comment. And I, I can, I get that, right? We all know that the sidewalks in front of our house are not city property. It is the homeowner property, we all know that one. Anyway, quickly.
Wait, can I just clarify that?
Just for both of you guys, it's inconsistent in the city of Folsom.
Inconsistent.
The sidewalks sometimes are public property, sometimes are not. The, right, the actual owned property by some people, my house included, does in fact go out to the center of the road or the other side of the road.
Yeah.
So every example you can imagine exists in Folsom, just so that we don't kind of parse words of this. The unique thing in the historic district is that there were alleys surveyed and identified as public property that are roughly 20 feet wide in all of the places where the exhibit showed the red dashes, or the red lines.
I'm saying yes.
Okay.
But how people perceive, you know, maybe the ones I touched. I, I hear, you know, what Mike was saying, and I drove around, I think there's two are the big ones I found. And I looked at that property also, I think Mike was mentioning, it's 800 block. Those one or two, probably, we can definitely put the citation. I'm more interested, and also, Chief Casano, thank you for clarifying when I made my comments in last session, when our community service development, when they issue the ADUs. It is my understanding that every right, the front side can come, but after looking, driving around, that's not true. Chief is 100% right, you know, everything, you know, for 809B or 806 half, you know, that's how it has been, the right-of-way is all the time from the alley only. I felt it, they can't, fire trucks can't go, or ambulance or paramedics can't go. I just want to, you know, correct my statements from last time to this time, to make sure why I ask for more time. That's number one. And number two, implementation, that's when I ask the, you know, I knock the doors, and I ask them. So there is an item, tonight, do you know about it? Nine out of 10 times, they don't know. I know, again, please quote me on that, because, you know, how much people pay attention to it, or, some people, they said, yes, we do know, and they expressed some concerns also. Anyway, that's the thing, but how is that implementation? You know, that's, you know, the question I would like to ask before we can say yes. How do we implement after 30 days, or from January 1st, next year?
Well, the ordinance takes effect 30 days from adoption, which would be December 22nd on, on the calendar. As far as implementation goes, you know, again, as it's been stated, you know, we don't intend to go out there and, you know, post signs and enforce this new code immediately. It's just the missing tool in the toolbox that after our drivers, you know, ask someone to move, and they are rejected, that, you know, if this becomes persistent, that we can have a code enforcement officer or police officer come out and point to a specific section of the municipal code and say, this is why you need to move, or you're going to be cited. So that, that's how I think my team envisions implementation of this ordinance.
Thank you for clarifying, you know, I'm 100% on it, you know, after, after driving and looking at it, I think Mike is, you know, even the, some of the people who are living, they express the same thing, too, about this kind of thing. I think those are my comments, so.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
Did you? No, yeah, they, I thought it was interesting, so the 14-foot alley that you referenced, they, you said that they put the cans on one side of the alley, and that seems to have worked, or are they still having issues?
That's my understanding how they manage that particular alley. It's a very short alley, there's only a few homes on it, so it's easy to coordinate with those residents.
I mean, I still have an issue a little bit with doing a blanket ban. It's almost like we're across the entire historic district. 14 feet, you know, making that a regulation could be, you know, meet both needs. But I, I do think that, you know, something needs to happen in order to give us the ability to get our garbage trucks down there. So I'm still, you know, of the opinion that why don't we set this up in stages? And maybe what we could do is, maybe it's making an alley that all garbage cans have to be on one side and clear access on garbage days, or no parking at all in the alleys outside of private property on garbage days. I'm totally fine with both of those options. And the other one, addressing the emergency vehicle access, why don't we just put in the, the, why don't we just make an ordinance that you can be fined or a vehicle can be towed if they're blocking an emergency vehicle access? So then, with repeat offenders, we can solve that problem pretty easily, like that second picture over there, by having some code to enforce. But yet, the people that are just over one foot in a 20-foot alleyway, which is doing no harm anywhere, that those people can still be respectful and, and work within the city. So, a blanket ban still sounds kind of harsh and not the first step that we should take. So I would like to have us discuss maybe some version of the option, but enough that we can put it in an ordinance so that, that our Fire Chief and our Public Works have the ability to enforce. I mean, if we're gonna put an ordinance that we're not planning enforcing, enforcing, then, or piecemealing it, I'm not in favor of an ordinance that we're not gonna enforce. So that's why I would like to see it, you know, maybe in, in one step, this could be a good step. I can repeat that, too, if you want me to, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I, I get what you're saying. I think citing, so, two things from what you said. The, having the tool to deal with persistent blockages is what we're trying to achieve here. And somebody who parks parallel and is one foot over the line is probably never gonna get a call or a tag on their car or anything like that. It's the person that leaves their trailer out in the middle of the alley on a consistent basis and annoys their neighbors, annoys the Public Works Department when they try and pick up trash, and may risk somebody's life if one of those ADUs has to be accessed. And waiting till they block an emergency vehicle is potentially way too late.
But that's what, that's what we're doing, I mean, any ordinance, you're, I mean, there is.
We're saying that you can be fined and ticketed if you block the alley, okay? And we're establishing what the width, you know, what, that the alley is something that needs to be clear, okay? And I, I think that, that leaves us a tool for enforcement when we need it. And I'm assuming that, like most things that we do, reasonableness will break out, and we're not gonna over-enforce it capriciously.
Well, I think. I think there was that one street, there's only one street, or one alley in the historic district that exceeded the 20-foot, and it's a 30-foot. And so, I feel, you know, I feel really bad putting an ordinance into that alley when the alley doesn't, isn't a part of the problem. And so I don't know how we can exclude that one particular alley.
Can't, why can't we loosen it and just say, you know, the vehicles will be fined or towed, or both, if blocking emergency vehicle access, and define what that means, and that might mean up to 14 to 15 feet, instead of 20 feet. And that way, we're not having to worry about those one or two feet, you know, which aren't an issue in many of the alleys, but those ones that are an issue, that would apply to this, to these situations.
Chief, can I ask you to come forward, I got a question for you with regard to that.
I mean, so as you're coming up, maybe the way to ease into this, instead of just doing a plan, most of the alleys are 20 feet, you're going edge to edge, and, you know, some people are gonna be very diligent about that, you know that to be true, and then some people won't care. What if we make it 14 feet, which is two and a half feet clearance on, the garbage truck seems to be wider, for the garbage truck and the emergency vehicle, alleviating some of that?
So, just generally speaking, I'm assuming that our normal course of action is to have alleys that are 20 or 24 feet wide? Is that more typical with new development? That's actually a question for Mark, I'm gonna come back to you.
Yeah, I believe the, the new standard is 24 feet wide for an alleyway.
Okay. So, chief, you know, if you bring out the fire truck pumper, you need to be able to access both sides of it to operate and get all your tools and equipment out, and you need space to operate on either side of the vehicle, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm not imagining that.
No, I'm just listening to the dog with reverse sneezes.
In a perfect world, is 20 feet adequate if the truck is in the dead center?
Yeah, typically, any emergency vehicle access, EVA, that we have, even with special events, is 20 feet minimum is what we require. And that, it just, it's not that, you know, our, our vehicles, eight foot, three inches wide, however, you've got a mirror on each side that sticks out another foot, and then we have to, like you said, be able to access the sides of the vehicle. So that, that starts to, even if you're in the middle of the alleyway, it starts to narrow up pretty good.
Yeah, okay, that was it, I just wanted to verify. You need space around the vehicle, so just passing through the alley is not really the issue. In an emergency, you need to be able to operate the vehicle from its stationary position.
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And then there was also the three-foot, Mark, three-foot away from the building that the garbage can needs to be located, which leaves us 14 feet at that point to get in and out.
Yeah, and that doesn't leave any wiggle room for, for that driver to maneuver, you know, around, you know, parked vehicle or any other obstruction.
Yeah. Mayor, based on, you know, my drive today, most of them are not 20 feet. But that's okay, they can, they can manage. Good part is, if they can move a little bit more, they have 20 feet.
Sure.
Right? It's not that every spot, you know, the second statement, vehicles parked on private property adjacent to the public alley, that helps most of them, they can pull over a little bit, then it can be more clearance. A feet on the public property, too, it's not going to hurt anybody. And I did saw those ones, they were all the way to the alley, but when they see the second statement there, at least people be a little bit more cautious and careful, you know what, let me pull over, so.
Very good. Okay.
I just have a comment that I'm gonna make a motion. I mean, for all intents and purposes, these are just like, they're streets, you know? This is how people, some people access their driveway, their garage, some people access their front door if they have an ADU, you know, where their garbage gets picked up. It's no different than, than the street that you or I live on. And we wouldn't tolerate somebody blocking the middle of the street and not allowing a garbage truck to have access, or in my, what I think is more concerning, an emergency vehicle to have access. I, I don't consider this to be any different. So, in order to focus this discussion, I'm gonna move adoption of ordinance number 1348.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, unless there's further comment. I'm gonna ask that the roll be called.
I know, I was the one asking time last week.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I was the one, of course. But after listening to how the implementation, this helps those problem changes, that's all I can say.
Okay, all right.
Council members, Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
No, only because I wish we could have negotiated the amount of 20 feet to 18 feet or 14 feet.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchera?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes. All right. That is our extraordinary bunch of regular business for tonight. Council requests for future agenda items, Rosario, anything?
Nope.
Anna?
No, so did you mention we're not having the meeting? Or you're gonna talk about that?
We are, we are going to forego the meeting, the Thanksgiving week Tuesday. That's the 26th, I think, is that right?
I am, that was gonna be my only thing for agenda, is that events impact fees. Probably not a good week to have that, so.
You got your wish.
Yes, thank you.
All right, excellent. YK, anything for future agendas? Okay, Madam Vice Mayor, okay. Hearing none, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two Halloween events coming up this Saturday. The first is the Folsom Police and Fire Departments will hold their annual public safety trunk-or-treat event at 9:00 AM, next door at the Folsom Police Department at 46 Natoma Street. Trick or treat safely as you check out police and fire department vehicles and equipment, meet officers and firefighters, police canines and horses and more, all ages are welcome to this free event. And over at the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary, we'll be hosting Wild Halloween from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Kids can wear their favorite costume to this fun, family-friendly Halloween event and enjoy hands-on activities, visits with their favorite zoo animals, and collect lots of goodies. Event admission is $10 per person, children under two are free, and tickets can be purchased at the gate. Sacramento Regional Transit is making significant construction progress in adding a passing track at the Glenn Robert G. Holderness Station to provide 15-minute light rail service to all Folsom area stations, including Hazel, Iron Point, Glenn Robert G. Holderness, and Historic Folsom. Folsom Boulevard, Glenn Drive, and Park Shore Drive are now all fully reopened, but there will be extended bus bridges Friday, November 8th through Sunday, December, Sunday, November 10th, and Friday, November 15th to Sunday, November 17th. And you can find out more at SACRT's website. And finally, if you're looking for a unique gift for this holiday season, the Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary offers opportunities to become an honorary zoo parent through its animal adoption program. By sponsoring a zoo sanctuary animal, you can help support its care. By sponsoring a zoo sanctuary animal, you can help support its care and feeding while making a difference in its life. Adoption levels range from $50 to $1,000, and you can find out more on our website. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent, okay. Council comments? Rosario, anything tonight?
Yeah, I spent three days last week at the Cal Cities Conference, which had so many fantastic sessions, but I stuck to the homeless and the state laws on housing. And so I'll share a little more about that at our next meeting, which I think might be my last meeting with this. But there are just so many things that are happening that are very interesting when it comes to housing laws and what is happening. So I'll share a little bit more of that at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Anna? Okay, YK?
We finalized our executive director for Cable Commission, and we are announcing on this Thursday at a special meeting. And the trick or treat is coming. I know it's getting dark early, be safe, and happy Halloween.
Madam Vice Mayor?
I would just say, good job clerking, Christina, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. I probably could come up with five or six things to say, but I will just say this. The Choose Folsom, Folsom Chamber of Commerce frequently does celebrations that come in the form of ribbon cuttings for new businesses and significant anniversaries, and there has been a bumper crop of them. And I take that as evidence that we have some really successful long-term businesses in town, and a lot of people who are optimistic about their prospects who are starting new businesses. So, that's all good news for us. And with that, I will say, things are looking up, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye.